I'm going to call the October 17th, 2023 Regular Council Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Before we start the meeting tonight, we have a couple people to honor. I'd like to have Gary Morrow come stand up at the podium for me. I'm not trying to embarrass you, but this is Gary Morrow. He's our newest city worker. He works in the utility office. And on Friday morning, he exhibited some incredible bravery. We had an incident here at City Hall where there were a couple pit bulls that were loose. And I was actually coming back from Tim Hortons, and it was kind of shady. I couldn't see exactly, but it looked like the dogs were having a lot of fun here. And I said, oh, isn't that nice? But as I got closer, I saw that there was an attack going on. A resident who was walking by actually was attacked by one of the pit bulls and developed a nasty wound. And that same pit bull then attacked her dog and had it in a death grip. So Gary happened to be walking by and heard the commotion, went outside, and was able, through physical kicking and yelling and whatever he had to do, he was able to get that pit bull off the dog, save the dog's life. The dog is fine. It did have some cuts. And the owner went to the hospital, had some stitches. And so we're here to honor you tonight for your incredible bravery. So we want to thank you for what you did, and we're glad to have you on our team. So. Don't go. Don't go. You have some family out there, don't you? Would you like to introduce them, please?
My wife Lori and my son Hunter over here. We're from Arizona, so we're happy to be here.
What about your sister-in-law? Yeah. You left your brother-in-law home, obviously, which is a good thing. Good thing. So tell us a little bit about your background.
Oh, wonderful. We just moved from Arizona. My wife's originally from here. We're out in the desert forever, so I don't know if I'm looking forward to the winter, but I probably could get a coat. So, but I sold some real estate out there and then did a bunch of other stuff. But it's been a long time. She's been wanting to come back, so we finally did.
We're glad to have you.
I wanted it as long as I could.
Thanks. Well, thanks for your bravery, because I think, you know, that could have gone really bad pretty quickly. And so, thank you. So get back to work. Another person we want to, so as I was coming, the pit bulls were trying to get inside City Hall, because we have those automatic doors. And as I came up the steps there, we had one of our other special city workers exhibiting some bravery, blocking the door and trying to keep the pit bull from getting in and keeping attacking that person and the dog, too. So it was quite scary and quite chaotic. So we'd like to honor Miranda. Would you stand up? There you go. Miranda did a great job there. So we thank you for everything you did there. I know it was, again, very scary. What you did was very brave, too. So I'm very proud. We're very proud of you guys and glad to have you as members of the city team. So thanks. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, moving on. We have the minutes from the October 2023 Regular Council Meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You also have the October 5th, 2023 Special Council Meeting before you.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You also have the August 1st, 2022, 2022, 2022 Public Hearing Minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now granting permission for visitors to speak. If you would, when you approach the podium, state your name and address. You will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
John Rostache, City of Bucyrus zoning administrator. Just wanted to give a quick update about the Omni Fiber project in Bucyrus. The Omni Fiber project has been challenging in recent weeks. Omni Fiber hired American Engineering Group as the general contractor to install the network. AEG then hired various subcontractors to perform the work. Unfortunately, several of the subcontractors have hit water mains during construction. The Bucyrus team has worked diligently with AEG to prevent these issues, but AEG and the subcontractors have not met our expectations. During a conference call today with Omni Fiber, the Bucyrus Service Safety Director expressed his concerns, and Omni Fiber agreed that expectations were not being met and that a new general contractor is needed for Bucyrus. The crews will clean up the areas they were currently working in before they leave. There will be a pause in progress of the project while Omni Fiber obtains a different contractor. So on behalf of the Bucyrus team, I would like to thank, thank you for understanding and your patience. We want the very best for Bucyrus, and we are working hard to make sure that that happens. I would like to thank members of our water distribution staff, John Ernstberger, Kevin Tyner, Rick Smith, and Anthony Ullit. I'd like to thank them for their hard work and service to Bucyrus. So that's an update on the current status. But they'll get back on track. Thank you all.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. As everyone knows, constitutional rights to the First Amendment is freedom of speech, the press, assembly, and the right to petition or governance for redress of grievances. At the last committee meeting, it seems the law director, as he called himself, the jerk in the room, is out of touch with the issues and effects of city residents. What was up with the comment of a different kraut is the law director laboring residents of the city. Comments of the six firefighters versus two police officers was a bad choice of words. I understand that crime is going up, and Bucyrus Police Chief was on Crawford County now on a podcast talking about these issues. If you, as a resident, want to talk about these issues, that's fine. Come around and get in front of the podium like everybody else, but don't use your position to shut others down. The term resource allocations, as you stated many, many, many times. What does the police department do? Why does the police department do lockouts of vehicles? Maybe they should get triple, people should get AAA. Private property damage reports, exchange names and insurance information to go to the police department and fill out the reports. Anything else that the police can do between eight and five? That's the way it should be set up to lead these officers. Do the major crimes, as you stated Thursday night. It also seems the law director is running the police department, not the police chief. But I would like to thank the police chief for doing a fantastic job. The law director should stick to his duties and not try to run the show. If you don't like the firefighter's contract that the mayor negotiated and council approved it, it's end of story. Move on. Apples and oranges are different in many ways, just like your statement. I'm an expert on that. I don't believe that is true at all. The city paid out $17,033.41 to the Bucyrus Bratwurst Festival. Police Department took over 12 grand. Fire Department less than two, and safety services took out $2,700. That alone might have got a second vehicle for the police department or a lease option purchase towards one. I've come to council before and was told you that the income tax wasn't enough money. It's on record. Two, I came to you also about putting a levy on and letting the voters decide to have a police levy and a fire levy so they can stay within their fiscal responsibilities within each department with their budget. Let the city residents decide what they want. And also, sir, good luck on November 27th and Columbus on your hearing on the 33 issues that you admitted to. And sir, God bless America, sir.
My name is David Garrick. I'm with the Fraternal Order of Police Ohio Labor Council. I am the staff representative for the Bucyrus Police Department, representing the patrol unit and representing the supervisors' unit and also the dispatcher's unit. It was a year ago, less than a year ago, we were in these same chambers when we were honoring three people from the Bucyrus Police Department for their heroism involving a person from the Crawford County area who, Officer Wireman, I believe it was, initiated a traffic stop and took fire and returned fire. Thankfully, there was no loss in life. I'm here today because I see on your agenda that you are meeting in executive session in reference to the wage reopener for the Bucyrus Police Department Dispatchers and Supervisors Unit. I ask that you consider things very carefully when you review the proposal that's been issued by me and the members of the Bucyrus Police Department. In a nutshell, Bucyrus has fallen terribly behind in economics when it comes to paying their public servants. And I ask, what is the cost to be able to sleep well at night? We're not asking for a large ask. We're just asking for what's fair and what was already offered to the IAFF and the Bucyrus Fire Department. We're coming through negotiation seasons right now, and I handle the majority of the local police departments that are in this area. I handle Richland County. I handle Galleon. I handle Marion. I handle the Richland County Sheriff's Office, Delaware. All of these places are within 25-minute drive from Bucyrus, who are paying significantly more than what the City of Bucyrus is paying to the Bucyrus Police Department. Just for a, for instance, I just closed business with Marion Police Department on Friday last week for a 19.5% increase in their wages over three years. Delaware got 15% over three years. Galleon got 15% over three years. You have an aging police department. Forgive me, Mr. Walker. You have people who are looking to retire. How do we retain the younger police officers and attract them here? And the only way to do it is to make them comparable with other cities that are not far from here. Some months ago, Chief Ostenheimer stood in my very position here and, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I broke that. Robert Taylor, 411 Plymouth Street. First of all, I'd like to address the administration. When you came to the voters, you said that you wouldn't touch the out-of-town income tax credit. That was either a bold-faced lie or incompetence, probably both. I'm not surprised of either. Secondly, you gave the fire department a huge raise. Now, what I don't see up on Plymouth is I don't see the fire department running these Narcan calls by themselves. They always got the cops with them. You know why? Because the cops carry the guns. And if we're not going to pay these guys, they're going to leave. And as the population of Bucyrus ages, there's a lot of people who aren't willing, proficient to arm themselves and take care of themselves. You're going to have a major problem on your hands with the chaos that's being created from Washington, D.C. It's going to come here. You better start paying these guys, or they're going to leave. And as far as the negotiations that this man has made with other cities, we can't even negotiate with them. We have to farm it out. And to sit up here and hear that our law director is making some obscene statements to people, I'd worry about negotiating the contract so we don't have to pay $100,000 for another firm. I mean, I don't even want to be up here anymore. I'm tired of coming here and talking to you guys. A lot of you are leaving. I'm glad most of you are leaving. This is absurd. What is the debate? You don't need cops? Because they're going to leave. They're going to leave. Now, do I want to keep paying higher taxes, higher taxes? No, of course I don't. But you've already set the precedent by giving the fire department, what, 10%? I mean, some of those guys are making six figures. Sure, they're working a lot of overtime hours, and I think the retirement fund, the drop, as they call it, is a bit, is really, really outrageous, but that's the system we have. So we're stuck in it. And this is not anything to do with any of that, but for the gentleman and the young lady that was out here kicking a pit bull, if you change your policy and allow your employees to carry a concealed weapon inside the building like their constitutional rights allow them, you wouldn't have that issue, because it's not here and ended it with no threat to anybody. Thank you.
I'm a partner with the business here in town, 210 North Walnut. We are on the verge of World War III, so if you think that all the chaos that we're seeing all over the country isn't going to increase here, you're nuts. So you guys better prioritize the police in this town, or else I recommend to your city members, get a gun, make neighborhood watches, and defend yourself, because they can't do it. And they're going to make Bucyrus even worse than the historically name of the rough city, the organized crime city. We bragged that Al Capone was part of our town. Is that really something we want to brag about? My goodness, you guys. Prioritize. You can, famous statement that was made, you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. So don't waste money on projects that aren't keeping people safe, because that's what these guys are risking their lives. Look at Mr. Wireman. He could have been killed, and these guys go out here every day. So prioritize.
I didn't mean to interrupt chief there. My apologies, but I was quicker or closer, is what it was. Tom Walker, Bucyrus Police Department, past president. Madam President, thank you very much, City Council, for your time. Shortly, you are going to probably go into executive session, and you are going to look over the proposal the City of Bucyrus Police Department provided, the FOP provided to you. I only really have a couple things that need to be said about it. We've discussed that we have young officers here. Not too terribly long ago, we lost nearly a turnover rate, probably close to about 80% of our department at one time, real close to it, just because people are leaving to go get better jobs and more money. The other thing that's kind of important is, as Dave had already pointed out to you, there are agencies within our county that our guys could go to that are going to make considerably more money than the City of Bucyrus. I know that Marion, right off the bat, the chief down there, literally named us specifically Bucyrus City, if you work for Bucyrus. He named us specifically and targeted our officers and said, if you want to come down here, we'll pay off whatever you owe the City of Bucyrus, and you can start from day one where your seniority is. Salary to salary, they're $18,000 more base salary than what our officers make in Marion. And they just got a 19.5, almost 20% increase over the course of the next three years. That's 20, almost $22,000 more per year base salary to drive 20 minutes. If I'm a young man, which obviously, as Mr. Garrick pointed out, I'm not anymore. If I'm a young man, that is going to be awfully hard to turn down, because I can live here and I can drive there, and I can make considerably more money. And the last thing I will leave you with, because I can be long-winded, and I apologize for that. When you look around back here and you see all the young faces, many of them are just starting out as young families. I know for a fact that there are some, because of the monetary issues, that are even considering at this time, looking at other places. And it hinges on the decision that you are going to make this evening or whenever you decide to make it. I sincerely hope it's soon, because these are young people and young faces, and they need to go where they can live and make a livable wage. If you want to go back through this process of hiring and all over again and redoing this, you're going to set us back two years. If we don't get what we've offered, and again, I go back to, and I just want to leave you with this, the offer that we gave you, if you were to approve that offer, we're still behind Galleon, considerably still behind Galleon. At the 15, they're going to get a 15% raise, Mr. Mayor.
Five.
Yeah, they're their last year. Next year's a 5%.
Okay. Mr. Garrick?
Five, five, and five over the contract.
Okay. So five, five, and five over the, so they're going to get 15%.
Yeah, if I've got this.
Okay. So the point being is that we're behind Galleon.
I understand that they're not going to be substantially behind, but you know, we'll talk.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Hello. Neil Ostenheimer, police chief here in the City of Bucyrus. I guess we've heard a lot about Galleon. I brought their contract up. I printed it off the SERB website here earlier today. For 2023, their top wage for patrol officers is $2.49 an hour more than what ours is. For dispatchers, it's $2.71 an hour more, and that is basically as of January 1st of Blows my mind that in two months, it'll be 2024, but in 2024, Galleon's top salary is going to be $4.01 more than what our officers currently pay. And dispatchers is going to be $3.98 more than what we currently pay. And I would say with the proposal that they've brought to the city, I don't know that there's been any actual meeting here to discuss any of that, but I would ask that you guys take a good look at it when you go to your executive session and see what you can do about bringing us on par with them. It's about being competitive in the area that you're in, and Galleon's where we're competitive with right now with people. And they said they get, they get the candidates more so than what we do, and they don't have the turnover that we do. So I would encourage you again to take a look at the proposal that's been brought. These guys back here, that's the Bucyrus Police Department. There's a lot of those guys back there, I think, expecting you guys to do the right thing. Like I said, about a year ago, I was up here, I spoke to you guys, you know, after the fire department got their contract, you know, you guys were, showed a lot of respect and a lot of appreciation for the fire department, and I think that this is going to be the opportunity that you all have to do the same for the police. If there's anything else I can help you with, just please let me know. Thank you for your time.
Noah Graves, SERC City Patrolman. Just a quick few things. Everybody's talking about young guys. I have two years on the force. I'm one of those young guys. Now, it, I'm very frustrated with this, because I'm one of the FTU officers. I'm training these new guys. I'm on my sixth one now. And all six of them, I guarantee you, if we don't get this contract, they're going to leave. I'm one of those people. I, like they said, I have a family coming up. I can't do, Galleon's going to be at $33.51 by 2025. I work on the SRT team, our SWAT team for Crawford County, and there's Galleon guys on there bragging how much more they make than me. You know, it hurts. All right, we're not asking to be above these people. We're not even asking to be on par. We're asking to be within a dollar, even $1.50, you know? We're so far behind the schedule, and it's ridiculous. I talk to these young guys, these young faces, I mean, I'll bring the Captain Walker thing up again. All right, six of our officer, six of our officers are going to be retired probably within the next five years.
Three.
It's three years, yeah. I mean, the time, the time is coming, though, in all seriousness. If we leave, and I don't want to scare the City of Bucyrus, because I love this town. I grew up here. I don't want to leave. I love serving and protecting this town. And I guarantee you, all these officers love to do the same. But if we don't get what we are asking for, then you're going to have a department of five people. You're going to have to start all over. It's going to be dangerous. It's going to be very dangerous, because you're not getting laterals here, because people who lateral go to departments that make more. Like, I would be considered lateral to another department. You're not going to get those. All right, you're going to get young bucks out of the academy that are 21 years old and have no clue what they're doing. I guarantee you that. It's going to be dangerous. And I don't want to scare the City of Bucyrus. I don't want to do that. And I guarantee you, we're going to keep working hard, and if that time comes and we leave, then we leave, but I guarantee you, we're going to give it our all every day. So, all right, thank you.
Zion Hickman, 849 South Sandusky Avenue, a third ward candidate. As a candidate deeply committed to the safety and well-being of our community, I want to address a pressing issue that affects all of us, the challenges faced by our police department in terms of the pay increase and the high turnover rates. Our officers are the backbones of our community. They work tirelessly to protect us, ensuring our, ensuring our safety and security daily. It is disheartening to see that many of these dedicated individuals are facing financial struggles due to stagnant wages. This not only affects their morale, but also has a direct impact on the level of service that they provide to the community. To maintain a strong and effective police department, we must address these issues head-on. It's imperative that we advocate for fair and competitive wages for our officers. They deserve to be compensated appropriately for the risks that they take on our behalf. By providing a better wage and a path for career advancement, we can create a more stable and motivated workforce. Additionally, the high turnover rate is a cause for concern. We must understand that attracting and retaining talented officers is crucial for the well-being of the community. When experienced officers leave due to financial constraints or lack of opportunity, it disrupts the continuity and effectiveness of our police force. We must make a concerted effort to create an environment that supports our officers and gives them the necessary resources to succeed and grow. Investing in our police department is an investment in the safety and prosperity of Bucyrus. By advocating for fair pay increases and addressing the high turnover, we demonstrate commitment to the well-being of our officers and the safety of Bucyrus. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're moving on. Thank you very much. Communications and petitions.
I received an email in my inbox on Friday. It's from Stephanie Buchanan from the Bucyrus Public Library. It says, Miranda Gerard Dolan will be resigning from the Library Board of Trustees effective October 15th, 2023. We would like for council to approve Donna Moore to replace him for the remaining time of his term ending December 31st, 2023. Donna previously served on the board, and placing her back on will help us to keep business flowing smoothly. Donna was also the head of our levy renewal campaign earlier this year. Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to refer this to economic development.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Standing Committee Reports, plating.
All right, nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report.
Standing committee reports, plating.
I have nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report, Madam President.
Service?
No report.
Traffic commission?
Nothing, Madam President, I'm sorry.
Report of city officers, Mr. Mayor?
Nope, I had my report first thing.
All right. Safety service director?
Uh, I don't have this report, you have a copy?
Oh, you want?
Thank you. Okay, we have on Friday, November tenth, city hall offices will be closed in honor of Veterans Day. Trash pickup? There we go. Trash pickup for Friday, November tenth will be on Monday. Please have your trash out by seven AM. Driven excavation has started sewer work on Hill Street from Tiffin Street to Pleasant Hill Drive. The hours will be seven-thirty PM to five-thirty PM, Monday through Thursday, from October sixteenth to October twenty-seventh. We held a board of control meeting to award the Dudley Reconstruction Project, and it came in at six hundred and six thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-three cents, which is a savings of roughly three hundred and fifty thousand, and that from the engineer's estimate, so, which we're very tickled about that. That was a split between three different funds. After meeting with the contractor, we will set up a public meeting for the residents in that area to attend, to hear any concerns they have and explain the project and the timing of it, of course. City crews will start some of the leaf pickup this week and next, there's still a lot of leaves to come down, but the week of October thirtieth, they will start at one end of town and go to the other and they start over. And hopefully by the end of November, they've got everybody's leaf. So have patience. If they're on the north end of town, they will certainly get the south end as soon as they can. Just remember, they walk to do this, so it does take some time. Big event in Bucyrus is coming up a week from, no, I'm sorry, this coming Saturday. Spooktacular. It's always been an excellent time for the kids and free food, we give away a lot of prizes and activities and all the shelters are full of local organizations who give out the candy and, and different prizes too. So that starts at three o'clock, time's a little different this year, it's three o'clock and it'll end at six o'clock. It will go on rain or shine, unless of course it's pouring, but just keep an eye on the weather, but if there's any change in it, we will put that on the city website. But the forecast so far is for showers early Saturday and I think we're going to be good on Saturday afternoon. Trick or treat is Sunday, October twenty-ninth, from two to four PM. And there's just one more thing, I've got a referral here. Just a second. I would like to refer the codified ordinance replacement pages to public lands and buildings. And that is the end of Jeff's report.
All right, I have a referral for the codified ordinance replacement pages to public lands and buildings. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Gurnard? Ms. Lewis?
Our office has decided to enter into a new contract for auditing services with the company Clark Schaefer Hackett to replace Perrin Associates. They were highly rated by Central IPA through the state and were comparable price to Perrin Associates. As of October fifteenth, the Safety Forces Levy has brought in nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-one cents for this month. This is roughly three thousand dollars less than we were at this time last month, but that is subject to change based on when the employers decide to submit payment. I would also like to discuss with council pulling legislation thirty-six, 2023. It is incorrect. I had given the document to the law director's office as if it was a transfer instead of a reimbursement, so it should be corrected and redone. So in conclusion, I would like to refer to finance committee appropriating, oh, forgot to mention this, four thousand dollars to traffic light electric line two oh five seven six one two five two three two zero and to finance committee repealing legislation thirty-six, 2023.
All right, I have request for referral to finance appropriation for traffic lights and the repeal of ordinance thirty-six, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You have before you the treasurer's report. You have a motion to accept and file.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Young to accept and file the treasurer's report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And do we have anything formal from you, chief, that you want to give?
Well, not really, but I can, I just, after Walker said about our attrition here, I sat here just now and jotted down fourteen names that have left here.
Thank you. It just makes it easier for people on the air.
All right, so after Tom brought up the issue of attrition, I just sat over here and just off the top of my head came up with the name of fourteen officers that have left this department since I've been here. Like I said, they've all, I didn't even count the people that left that didn't get into the, into the field, these are all people that have left for different jobs. So there's fourteen guys and includes everyone that we've hired between 2010 and 2020. So it's an entire decade of our hiring that is gone. And just to kind of reiterate what Noah said, this department has worked very hard to replace these people that have left with quality officers. We've done that. It's just a matter of getting them trained. I say we because you're looking at FTOs, you're looking at people that did background checks, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes into hiring and training these guys, getting them all through the academy and everything. It's a lot of work has been gone and we've got a really good department and we're just getting to the point where we're really going to be able to start moving ahead again. I think we've got our last two officer candidates that are on FTO right now, they should be ready to go next month on their own. And that would put us at nineteen full-time officers here to where we can actually start being a little more proactive and everything on stuff. So just please consider that when you guys make your decisions on talking about the contract here. Like I said, it's, we can't afford for these guys to go. Okay, I don't know if I've got another rebuild in me here. Thank you.
All right, you have before you also Chief Schwemlee's report. You have a motion to accept and file.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to accept the officer's reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would you like to explain the reconstituting of the water utility boards? Appeals board?
It's who, you wanted to reappoint everyone on that board?
Right, we want, okay. We want to go to some of the, the boards and commissions and make sure we've got everybody the right terms and.
Okay, so does that need to be referred to the committee?
No.
No, that's one time, the last time.
Council as a whole?
Yes.
May I speak about that before you do anything? Either that or I'll speak after visitors input and you're probably going to end up doing something you shouldn't have done. Just trying to make the process of it, I was.
Right. But if I do it for you, then I have to do it for everybody that wants to do it, so.
That's fine, I'll wait till visitors input.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, may I have a motion for reconstituting the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board? If it fails due to the lack of motion, we can move on.
We could bring it up again after the public comments section?
That would be fine with me, sir.
That sounds good to me.
I'd like to table this, please.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right. So I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick to table the issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Visitors are welcome to speak on standing reports of special committees and city officers.
Thank you, Sean, eleven oh eight Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrus. I wish to address the matter of reconstituting the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board, which is on tonight's agenda. At the June twentieth council meeting, appointments to the Stormwater Utility Board were referred to the service committee. At the June twenty-second committee meeting, Mayor Reeser gave the name of Tony Sheets and requested legislation for his appointment. interim law director Gurnard stated that he did not think legislation was needed and that the committee just needed to approve the mayor's appointment. The service committee approved Sheet's appointment. At the October fifth service committee meeting, Clerk Wise read an email from Mayor Reeser stating that he was reconstit- reconstituting the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board and would like to nominate Dennis Tyner, Anthony Sheets, Greg Orwiler, and Roger Brown. I informed the committee that per codified ordinance section nine twenty-seven point oh nine, the board shall consist of five voting members, four to be appointed by the mayor with the approval of two-thirds of council, and the fifth voting member to be the service committee chairperson. Therefore, the matter should have never come before the service committee. On October sixth, the day after the service committee met, I was provided by council clerk Wise a document listing Dennis Tyner, Craig Orwiler, Roger Brown, John Volk, and Terry Spiegel, service committee chairperson, as the five voting members of said committee. The list also confirmed that the term of each member expires December thirty-first, 2023. Since the current voting members' terms have not expired, I believe that Mayor Reeser's appointment can only be that of Anthony Sheets, who I assume is filling the unexpired term of John Volk. Thank you.
Okay.
So do we need to approve Anthony Sheets? Yes.
So what happened in June?
That was a committee in June. Correct, Vicki?
June sixth.
June sixth was a committee meeting, not a council meeting where he was?
Yes.
I didn't hear what date you said.
I'm sorry.
June twenty-second.
June twentieth.
That was where Mayor Reeser gave the name of Tony Sheets.
And that was at a committee meeting?
Yes, committee meeting, right.
Committee meeting, okay.
Were the previous appointments approved by council that are expiring and that you said were not approved?
Well, let's put it this way.
They were on the overall list of all the things that we approved.
And if you'll remember, I had come up and talked about our city's website, which has had me so frustrated. I mean, we've had at least four or five people on there still listed that have been dead. And I, I don't know why that city's website could not be updated. So earlier this month, I worked with council clerk Miranda Wise, and I know I'm not going to get her title correctly, but with our Bonnie Welsh, and between the three of us, I am happy to say that our city's website is all current, up to date, no dead people are listed on it. And I want to thank those two girls, I'm calling them my Energizer bunnies. The minute I send them an email, they are on it. So anyhow, I don't see how you could reconstitute a board that's in existence and is going to be in existence until December thirty-first. So to me, it'll be in January of 2024, then our new mayor will then appoint those four individuals, and then the new service committee chairperson will be on that committee. Now, to answer your question, Mr. Ross Dash, all I'm going by is the sheet, which is in the council clerk's office, if I do understand correctly, that lists the various boards and who's on them and when their terms expire. I will admit, I did not take the time to go through the council minutes to see if in fact these individuals were approved. I mean, I sure hope they were, someone got a list and.
And I, and I don't know that we found where they were approved back then, so that's why it was being reconstituted.
Okay, so then my comment to that would be, this all started back with the mayor on June twentieth. And here we are, almost the end of October, and we're still working on it. What's a couple more months? Let it go and let the new mayor take over and, and do his appointments.
Well, we have, we have people that are wanting to go to the appeals board for hearings.
And you've had these people since when?
Oh, months.
Months. And, and, and you've sat on it, referred it to the wrong committee?
No, I did, I did not.
Excuse me, the mayor sat on it. Well, he put it to the wrong committee. I mean, you should know what committees.
I think we just let it go, let the next guys take care of it. But see, the group Tony Sheets to replace John Volk. Oh, well, take care of it. We've run out of money soon. We had that, where you adopted all of the mayor's appointments and the council made their appointments, and that's where that list came from.
I was going to say, yeah, that was in January that it was all.
At the beginning of your term, we did those.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation of Tony Sheets to the Stormwater Utility Board. Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Young. Do we want to do a roll call so that we make sure that we have the appropriate number?
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Sheets, it's appointed to the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board. Thank you. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two three, airport appropriations, amending and supplementing ordinance number sixty-six dash twenty-two being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023, by appropriating from unappropriate general funds the sum of three thousand dollars to the contractual services line item within the airport category within the program six transportation subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-two three, transfer of funds, amending and supplementing ordinance number sixty-six dash twenty-two being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by decreasing the current balance in the personal services line item by sixty thousand dollars within the police department's category within the safety, safety forces levy subparagraph within the safety forces levy fund and increasing the current balance in the capital outlay line item by sixty thousand dollars within the police department category within the program one, security of persons and properties subparagraph within the general fund. Further by declaring, further by decreasing the current balance in the contractual services line item by one hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eleven and ninety-seven cents, and in the other uses line item by two hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents, with both line items being within the general government category within the local fiscal recovery fund, twenty-twenty-one subparagraph within the local fiscal recovery fund, twenty-twenty-one fund, and increasing the current balance in the personal services line item by four hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents within the fire department category within the program one, security of persons and properties subparagraph within the general fund and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution two twenty-seven dash twenty-two three, it's airport projects, authorizing and directing the mayor and the public service, and the public service safety director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc., eight one zero one, North High Street, Suite one fifty, Columbus, Ohio, four three two three five, for preparation of a ter- terminal justification report pertaining to the Port Bucyrus Airport. Not to exceed ten thousand dollars, authorizing and directing the mayor and the public service safety director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc., eight one zero one, North High Street, Suite one hundred and fifty, Columbus, Ohio, four three two three five, for the preparation of the necessary design and engineering work to upgrade the current runway. design and engineering work to upgrade the current runway lighting at Port Bucyris Airport, not to exceed $55,000. Further authorizing and directing the city auditor to issue a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from, and the appropriate, in payment therefore from, the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. Proposed Resolution 228-2023, the 2024 tax budget, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax rates and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to accept these as a first reading?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for the public to speak on legislation that's been read for the first Refer back to the originated committee, Proposed Ordinance 38-2023 is referred back to Finance, Proposed Ordinance 39-2023 is referred back to Finance, Proposed Resolution 227-2023 is referred back to Finance, and Proposed Resolution 228-2023 is referred back to Finance. The report of the committee on pending legislation, Finance?
Finance is favorable to Proposed Ordinance 38-2023, the airport appropriations. Finance is also favorable to Proposed Ordinance 39-2023, Transfer of Funds, also favorable to Proposed Resolution 227-2023, the airport projects, and also favorable to Proposed Resolution 228-2023, the 2024 tax budget.
Consideration of pending legislation, Ordinance Number 38-2023, for the second and third readings of Proposed Ordinance 38-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 38-2023?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
Young?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
And Sherrick?
Yes.
Ordinance 38-2023 is duly adopted. Ordinance Number 39-2023, for the second and third readings of Proposed Ordinance 39-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 39-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Myers.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Ordinance 39-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 227-2023, for the second and third readings of Proposed Resolution 227-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Potter?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 227-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Wireball.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Resolution 227-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 228-2023, for the second and third readings of Proposed Resolution 228-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 228-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Wireball.
Young?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
I need a motion and a second to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22-G4, to prepare for and review the collective bargaining strategy as it pertains to the local police officers' union.
So moved. Second.
I have a first by, yes, motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
We are in executive session...
7:59.
At 7:59. I have a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
We are out of executive session at 8:32. I want you all to know that we were presented with the option that the administration was There's still some negotiating that needs to be going on, I guess. It's not in our hands yet. Basically, we're, we're...
It hasn't been referred to...
Yeah, it hasn't been referred to a committee yet. We still have discussions that need to be going on, so we are open to what you're asking for. It's just it has to go through the process. And right now, we're at step one, and we need to get down the road.
What else do you need?
The administration would like to talk to you about a three-year instead of a one-year.
That was my initial...
That's what he said. But, right, it's, right.
We can't do anything until you guys get to an agreement.
Okay, well, we still have the matter at hand of the latency opener for 2024.
Right.
That's what you are currently sitting at.
Correct.
If you don't want to entertain that, then, you know, we have to consider...
That's not what we're talking about, though. That's not what we're in executive session for.
That's exactly what...
No, no, excuse me. I think, no, this, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
This has to be between the administration and the union, not council, okay?